Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the House Labor and Industry Committee. I am Representative Steven Bloom from the 199th District in Cumberland County. And as Secretary of the Committee, I'll be chairing the meeting today in the absence of our Majority Chairman, Representative Scavelo. I'd like to thank all the members of the House Labor and Industry Committee who have arrived so far at the meeting, and I think will be expecting several others to arrive during the course of our hearing this morning. Today is the first in a series of statewide committee hearings that we're going to be holding on this committee to discuss the issue of prevailing wage reform and several different pieces of legislation, including House Bill 665 and 796 to amend the Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act. I think, as everyone present and watching is aware, prevailing wage is a complex issue. Both the legislators and stakeholders have many divergent and sometimes polarizing views on the costs and benefits of prevailing wage reform and the Prevailing Wage Act as it's now implemented. I'll do my best today to make sure that everybody has a chance to be heard and that the members have an opportunity to question the testifiers as they see fit. And on behalf of the committee, I look forward to gathering input for all these groups to ensure that we do ultimately produce the best legislative product for the citizens of Pennsylvania. And I do want to thank all the different stakeholders who have taken that time to show up today to testify and get your opinions and perspectives on the record. I'd like to go ahead and have the members of the committee that are here introduce themselves, and then I'll turn it over to our Minority Chairman, Representative Keller, for his opening remarks. So if we could go down the line from my far right with members introducing themselves.
I'm John McGinnis from the 79th Blair County.
I'm Dan Truitt from the 156th District in Chester County.
Bruce, you want to go ahead and identify yourself as well?
Bruce Hanson, Executive Director of the Committee.
Vicky Delio, Executive Director for the Democrats.
I'm John Gallin, State Representative for the 140th District in Lower Bucks County.
Mark Erbly, 35th District, Gallion County.
And do we have a chair for you there? Do we? Okay, good. And Chairman Keller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as we discussed before the committee hearing, I'd like to bring up the fact that Rule 50 states that the committee has to have possession of the bills in order to hold a hearing on it. Because this committee is no longer in the possessions of the bills, it is not permissible for the committee to hold a public hearing on those bills under House Rule 50. I understand that you could hold a hearing on a topic, but every notification, the notification from the Majority Leader, I haven't seen one from the Speaker, but even today's agenda states that we're holding a hearing on House Bill 665 and House Bill 796. Now, I know you're a rule guy, you like the rules, but according to the rules, we are not permitted to have a hearing on bills that are no longer in the committee. There's a way we could adjust this, but it would have to be from the Speaker or the Majority Leader. But as of today, this hearing is not permissible because we do not have the bills in front of the committee to discuss.
Thank you, Chairman Keller. I have looked over Rule 50 myself, and while I certainly respect your position on the interpretation of the rule, I would read that Rule 50 to give us broad latitude as a committee to discuss not only particular bills but other such matters as are before us, including topics such as a topic of prevailing wage. And I don't think, when I read this rule, that it would actually prevent us from holding a hearing. We did have approval from the Majority Leader to hold the hearing, all in the normal course of the process that's given. And so I'm going to rule, as the Chair, that we can certainly proceed with the hearing. However, I will commit to taking the matter up with the parliamentarian, getting a formal opinion from the parliamentarian on this, so that there wouldn't be any question going forward if we hold future hearings.
And just, I want to, once again, reiterate the point that you can hold a hearing on a topic, but the topic has to be notified either by the Speaker or by the Majority Leader. The notification that we have from the Speaker and from the, I haven't even seen it, but it is on House Bill 665 and House Bill 796. And my point, and we'll straighten it out afterwards, my point is, according to the rules, we are not permitted to have a hearing on bills that are not before the committee. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, Mr. Chairman, but I believe we should not move forward and have a hearing on these bills today because it is against the House rules.
Okay, again, I respectfully appreciate the fact that you've brought this issue up, and we're going to go ahead and proceed with the hearing accordingly, and we will seek out a formal opinion at some point from the parliamentarian, but as of right now, we'll go ahead and proceed under the way I interpret Rule 50 to give us that latitude.
I understand.
Oh, and also, we welcome Representative Quinn, who has just arrived here at the hearing. We're going to begin with, Mr. Chairman, did you have any opening remarks you wanted to make with respect to the subject matter?
No, I mean, we've had hearings after hearings for years and years and years, and I believe this committee has done a lot of great work, and we've been able to find common ground on a lot of major issues. This is one of the issues we will never come to agreement on, the way it's being handled And I'll say, when we have questioning, prevailing wage is just the wage in a particular area, the average wage in a particular area. Now, we'll hear that it's the union wage, but it's the union wage because the unions fill out all the necessary paperwork. The people who do not fill out the paperwork can have it both ways. They can't say, "We want lower wages," but we're not going to send in the documentation that says our wages are lower. So this is the eternal argument we're going to have. We could end this without a hearing, we could end this without bills or without anything if everyone would participate and fill out the prevailing wage like they're supposed to. And you'll hear me say it again, you can't have it both ways. You can't say, "I'll be cheaper, but I'm not sending in the documentation." This is, the prevailing wage is, whatever, whoever participates and sends in the documentation, that's the prevailing wage in that area. And this is what it's about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to go ahead, we're right on schedule with our first witness, which is Tom Fontaine. Tom, if you could please take a seat there at the table, and you can go ahead and begin your testimony. I'd encourage all the witnesses to, oh, borough and township managers, we can do as a panel if you guys want to also sit up there, and then you'll be ready to go. We also have Mark Kunkel and Doug Erickson. And we're going to, right before you proceed, just have our Executive Director give a brief summary of the bills that we're talking about this morning and the issue that we're talking about this morning, then we'll proceed. And I want to remind all the witnesses to please make an effort to keep the testimony certainly within the confines of the time that we've allotted, as we've got a lot of ground to cover, and we want to try to do that efficiently here this morning. Bruce, if you want to just get that quick summary.
Very quickly, these bills deal with the Prevailing Wage Act. The Prevailing Wage Act, most people in here already know, but for the general public, was passed in 1961, and requires that the prevailing minimum wage be paid on public projects that are more than $25,000 in cost. The wages are determined by the Secretary of Labor and Industry, there's a lot of discretion how that person can do it. The Chairman Keller is correct, right now it's based on collective bargaining rates because they're the ones submitting the rates. That's a whole nother issue in how the rates should be determined, but they are based on collective bargaining rates. House Bill 796, the prime sponsor is not here, Chairman, Mr. Millard, is trying to offer a reasonable compromise to allow some smaller projects to be done without prevailing wage. Does not repeal Prevailing Wage Act, it simply raises the threshold that was established in 1963, which is $25,000. It hasn't been adjusted since 1963, it raises it to $100,000. If you adjust that $25,000 for inflation, it would really be about $190,000. But Mr. Millard believes he's offering a reasonable compromise to allow municipalities to do minor projects, you know, without prevailing wage, to allow municipal budgets to be stretched and do more work. But basically, all of the projects more than $100,000 would still be Prevailing Wage Act, which is about 98%, something like that, the project would still be subject to the Act. House Bill 665, again, the prime sponsor, Representative Marisco is not here, offers something that was established or PENDOT used for years for allowing minor road repair projects to be exempt from prevailing wage. House Bill 665 basically puts some minor repair work that was in a PENDOT publication, I think it was 2003, that PENDOT issued to municipalities to say the work that they could do without Prevailing Wage Act requirements. 665 basically puts those back in the statute and exempts them from Prevailing Wage Act, their minor repair work, to allow municipalities to do more work to repairing their roads. But that's a base, pretty quick and dirty on the bills. There are summaries in the bills out there for the public consumption.
Thank you, Bruce. And what we'll do is go ahead and have each of the three of you go ahead and present your testimony, and then we'll open up the floor for questions, so that any of the three of you could answer those questions. So, Mr. Fontaine, if you want to proceed, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Representative Bloom, Representative Keller, and members of the committee, and thank you for the opportunity to address the Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act. I truly appreciate this opportunity. I'm Tom Fontaine, the Manager of the Borough of State College. State College is a home-rule municipality with a population of 42,000 located here in Center County. State College Borough has long recognized the importance of organized labor and collective bargaining. Currently, the Borough's Public Works Department is organized under Pennsylvania Act 195 and bargains collectively with the Borough for wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of employment. Borough Council and Borough Administration place great value and importance on the ability and right of employees to organize and bargain collectively, and is supportive of the Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act. As Executive Director Hanson has noted, the Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act was originally enacted in 1961, and in 1963 amendments increased the threshold to $25,000 for contracts that would require prevailing wages. The limited definition of maintenance, coupled with the lack of adjustment in the threshold for the application of the prevailing wage requirements, creates a significant unfunded mandate, however, on local governments in Pennsylvania. As a member of the SR 322 Task Force on Unfunded Mandates, I can tell you personally that this is a significant issue for municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. The reforms called for in both House Bill 665 and House Bill 796 address these concerns. However, these bills may not go far enough with respect to threshold values for public contracts. Again, as Executive Director Hanson noted, with inflation over the 50 years since the enactment of the Prevailing Wage Act, the threshold today would be closer to $190,000. While increasing the threshold to $100,000 as provided in House Bill 796 is a significant step forward, I submit that the threshold should be moved closer to $200,000. This would more accurately reflect the inflation impact over the past 50 years. A provision should also be included in the legislation to index the threshold annually to reflect changes in the Consumer Price Index. This would prevent the threshold for the application of the Prevailing Wage Act from once again falling significantly behind inflationary trends and unnecessarily burdening future municipal budgets. The provisions of House Bill 665 result in the elimination of the requirements that road maintenance projects comply with the Prevailing Wage Act and addresses the issues raised in Borough of Youngwood versus Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Appeals Board. The Local Government Conference has estimated that this change alone will result in a savings of approximately $30 million annually for needed work on the transportation networks in Pennsylvania. House Bill 665, however, does not appear to address issues raised in Borough of Evansburg versus Prevailing Wage Appeals Board related to sidewalk repair and replacement. Including sidewalk repair and replacement and parking structure maintenance under the maintenance work exception would result in further cost savings for many Pennsylvania municipalities. Parking structure repairs, such as ceiling, concrete repair, tendon and rebar repair, striping, were all considered as maintenance prior to these court cases. These types of repairs are now subject to the Prevailing Wage Act. Over the past two years, the Borough of State College has let public contracts for $2,794,12 that are subject to prevailing wages. These contracts include both maintenance and construction projects. Among the projects that were let in 2012 with prevailing wages were the Pugh Street Garage Maintenance Contract for about $250,000, street and alley resurfacing contracts for about $330,000, sidewalk replacement contracts for about $67,000, and traffic signal pole replacement contract for $55,000. Thus far, in 2013, the following projects have been let with prevailing wages, street and alley resurfacing for $161,000 and sanitary sewer replacements for $330,000. In addition to these maintenance contracts, the Borough has also let contracts in 2012 and 2013 for street reconstruction and other construction projects that are clearly subject to prevailing wages in an amount of nearly $1.7 million. All but one of the construction projects would be subject to prevailing wages under House Bill 796. In fact, all but one of these projects would continue to be subject to prevailing wages even with the threshold escalation to $190,000. Thus, the impact of the legislative changes for State College would be most significant as a result of the amendments related to maintenance work. If sidewalks and garage repairs continue to be excluded from the definition of maintenance, the contracts previously noted for these types of work would also be subject to the Prevailing Wage Act. Although we do not have an estimate of the full cost associated with contracts performed under Prevailing Wage Act, most estimates put the increase at between 15% and 40%. A report issued by the Ohio Legislative Service Commission in 2002 placed the estimate at between 10% and 17%. Based upon a conservative estimate of 10% impact, the Borough of State College has incurred additional costs of approximately $280,000 over the past two years on public contracts that are subject to prevailing wages. If an estimate of 15% were applied, the increased cost for these contracts would be about $419,000. At the same time these costs are being incurred, the pavement condition of State College streets is declining significantly. Based on a difference between 2009 and 2011, 7% of the streets in State College went from a rating of very poor to 14% of the streets being rated as very poor in 2011. This trend is continuing and is resulting in increased cost in public maintenance for public infrastructure. The additional $300,000 to $400,000 that would be saved as a result of changes in the maintenance provisions of the Prevailing Wage Act could be applied to repair and reconstruct these streets and other infrastructure improvements that would be of significant benefit to the public and reduce costs on the community. Thank you again for forgiving me the opportunity to share with the committee a few of the impacts of the Prevailing Wage Act on municipal contracts and the costs of maintenance under these recent court decisions. Although both bills could do more to address these issues, House Bill 665 and House Bill 796 appear to move in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Fontaine. And Mark Kunkel, and please do make sure to use the mics. They're not for projection into the room, but they are for the live feed that's going on through the House video, and also ultimately this will be shown on PCN at some point on tape delay. So please do, members and testifiers, use the mics so we get that audio feed.
Again, good morning, Representative Bloom, Minority Chairman Keller, and fellow committee members. Welcome to the Center Region, and thank you for conducting these hearings on House Bill 665 and 796 that would amend the Prevailing Wage Act of 1961. My name's Mark Kunkel. I'm the Township Manager in Ferguson Township, a home-rule municipality here in Center County. I've been a professional municipal manager for 34 years, so I've seen how the cost of public improvements has escalated over time. When the Prevailing Wage Act was adopted, both Representative Scavelo, had he been here, and Representative Keller were playing Little League baseball. The average income was $5,315 per year.
I was batting about four out of ten.
The Phillies could use you right now. A new car cost $2,275, a new home cost $17,200, and a loaf of bread was 21 cents. The Dow Jones hit 734, and an IBM produced the selective typewriter, and the Johnson &amp; Johnson introduced Tylenol. I think you get the idea, times have changed. Yet, the law that governs today's public construction projects is caught in a 1961 time warp. To prepare a public project for bid requires a good faith estimate prepared by a qualified professional engineer or architect. Ferguson Township contracted out 28 public projects over the past five years for a total of $9,739,749. These projects have averaged $347,527 each. Of these 28 projects, 11 were under $100,000. The cost that prevailing wages has added to these projects is estimated at $1.95 million. That translates into 18.39 miles of road at 106,000 miles, receiving an inch and a half overlay of pavement at today's prevailing wage construction costs. I think that's a significant amount of roadway. Some examples of prevailing wage projects that are under $100,000 proposed threshold in the House Bill 796 that Ferguson Township lets frequently are street tree installations, street tree pruning contracts, park play equipment installation, construction of tennis and basketball courts, and placing a new roof on a township's salt shed. I know the committee is interested in real examples of the impact that the Prevailing Wage Act has on public projects. In general, the increase is between 20% and 30%. Since most public projects are not bid both with and without prevailing wage, it's difficult to find examples of projects to provide solid evidence of the increased cost. In 2012, Ferguson Township initiated a $4.5 million road improvement project. The early work on this project included tree removal in order to accommodate the utility relocation for the road widening portion of the project. Project engineer estimated the original work to be less than the prevailing wage threshold of $25,000. Subsequently, field conditions warranted change orders that brought the contract over $25,000 threshold. Contact was made with Labor and Industry, and the department was advised by LNI staff that now the entire contract fell under Prevailing Wage Act, and that the contractor must apply prevailing wage rates to the contract. The range wage for personnel assigned to this project by the low bidder were as follows: A certified arborist at $50 per hour non-pervailing wage went to $80 per hour under the prevailing wage rate, a 60% increase. Crew foreman, bucket operator, and climber had a $42 per hour non-pervailing wage rate and an $80 per hour prevailing wage rate, a 90.4% increase. The ground person went from $38 per hour to $70 per hour, an 84.2% increase, and the flagger went from $32 per hour to $65 per hour, or a 50.7% increase. This determination by LNI cost the base bid to go from $20,990 to $32,980, an increase of $11,990, a 57%, without any additional change to the scope of work. In my opinion, the township did not receive any better quality of work by paying more for this portion of the project. The Prevailing Wage Act also has a negative impact on private-public partnership projects. The private sector partner desires to participate in the public project but does not want to increase his cost due to the public funding needed and the application of prevailing wages. In fact, prevailing wage projects are expensive, so municipalities have tried a number of ways to avoid the added cost of prevailing wage. For public-private partnership projects where right-of-ways required, municipalities have purchased the right-of-way, and a developer has completed the public improvements. Some jobs are split in half, with the project done by the same company, with some workers getting rate while others receive non-rate on the same project. The prevailing wage law is a mandate, and expensive one at that. I believe this is not a mandate that the legislature should perpetuate, but rather repeal and lead the decision to apply a prevailing wage standard to the municipalities of each respective county. This would encourage small businesses and minority-owned businesses to compete for government work. This approach also respects the labor conditions by county and resolves the inequities created by a statewide approach to a very localized issue. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present the testimony today. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have now or may contact me using my contact information in the testimony I provided.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kunkel. And Mr. Erickson.
Thank you. Representatives Bloom, Keller, committee members, thank you for the invitation to testify. My name is Douglas Erickson. I'm testifying on behalf of Patton Township of Center County. I am the Township Manager, and I'm also a registered civil engineer with more than 30 years' experience in infrastructure design, construction, maintenance, and public works operations. Patton Township serves 15,000-plus residents here in Center County, as well as a very active and growing business community. We are the third-largest municipality in Center County, and we operate under the Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code. Our current annual budget is around $7.5 million. On a regular basis, the Township lets competitive contracts for Township projects. These projects have included building additions for public works operations, new parkland development, improvements to existing parks, and pavement maintenance activities. Since 2004, the Township has awarded more than $4.15 million in contracts subject to the Pennsylvania prevailing wage laws. This includes approximately $650,000 for pavement maintenance contracts that prior to 2008 were exempt from the prevailing wage laws. The $25,000 limit on municipal contracts exempt from prevailing wages has increased the cost for all taxpayers for making these investments in our infrastructure. We know the use of prevailing wage adds additional cost to a project, and over the years, the Township, in consultation with local contractors and consultants, has conservatively estimated that the additional cost is in the 15% to 30% range. Using the low end of that 15% to 30% range, these Township projects have required the expenditure of an additional $622,500, that's 15% of that $4.15 million, to comply with Pennsylvania prevailing wage laws. A substantial increase in the threshold for prevailing wage contracts should be enacted. Municipalities were also dealt another cost increase when overlay pavement was subjected to Pennsylvania prevailing wage laws in 2008. The Patton Township Public Works Department is diligent about maintaining the Township's more than 50 miles of roads and streets. We have found that the most effective tool to maintaining high-quality roads is overlay paving. Annually, the Patton Township Public Works Department lets a competitive contract in the $100,000 to $150,000 range for overlays. Since 2007, we've seen the per-ton cost of asphalt pavement rise from less than $60 per ton to more than $73 per ton. In total, the additional cost to the Township for complying with prevailing wage laws since 2008 has been at least $98,000. We would seek a return to the state policy of overlays as maintenance. That would mean that the Township has more funds to purchase the materials needed to maintain streets, signs, lighting, traffic signals, and storm drain pipes. I included a spreadsheet detailing all of Patton Township's prevailing wage projects since 2004 with my written testimony. Most of our contracts going forward will be pavement maintenance and smaller park or roadway upgrades, and typically will be $200,000 or less. We ask the legislature to seriously consider providing Pennsylvania's municipalities a means to reduce costs and make our infrastructure investments go further. Thank you for this opportunity to provide our perspective on the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. And I'll start with a couple of questions, and then turn it over to the Minority Chairman and then other members who have questions. Mr. Fontaine, you had, I think, I just want to make sure I understood your testimony correctly, and I just want to ask you if it's fair to summarize, you're saying that the two bills we've talked about today, the reforms that are proposed there, in your opinion, don't really go far enough to address the concerns, at least as it would impact your particular municipality?
I think that's a fair characterization. To be clear, we support prevailing wages in State College. It is not an issue of recommending that they be repealed, but the inflationary impacts of the bill, or of the original legislation, at $25,000, we believe should be adjusted to reflect changes in inflation over that period of time. And again, there are issues in the definition of maintenance that have been eroded by court cases over the last 10 years that we believe should be corrected with revising the definition to return to include overlay, street paving, and other routine maintenance for sidewalk replacements and parking garage repairs.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Kunkel, you, I think, asserted that you feel small businesses would actually benefit from the repeal or reform of prevailing wage. Can you expand on that thought a little bit more?
Yes, I think many small businesses are not willing to even bid on municipal projects, given the fact that they have certified payrolls to submit, that there's a rather rigorous auditing process that LNI staff goes through to make sure their wages are paid correctly in accordance with the wage rates. So this is an increased burden, I think, on small businesses, and many times they can be more competitive than some of the larger contractors and service providers out there.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Erickson, I just wanted to commend you for mentioning, not only that you feel that the prevailing wage laws impose an extra cost on the municipalities, but for accurately pointing out that, in fact, it's not the municipalities who bear that extra burden of cost, it's the taxpayers.
Correct. I mean, everything we do is to serve them, and we try to stretch the dollars as well as we can, either through labor or materials, we're always looking for the best deal. Here, if we can have some more money to invest in things like storm drains and other aspects of the infrastructure that we will do with our in-house forces, then we can just provide a better quality of life for taxpayers.
Excellent. Thank you. Chairman Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to start, you know, our belief is that prevailing wage maintains middle-class wages, and they're good for everyone in the state. To maintain a decent wage is one of the goals we've set out to make sure we continue down that road. And you've heard me say that if everybody who participated would send in their information, the prevailing wage in that area would come down. It would be whatever the prevailing wage in the area is. If it's just one group of people sending it in, the prevailing wage is going to be their wages. Do any of your townships or boroughs do anything to urge contractors to send in their information to the Department of Labor and Industry for prevailing wage?
No, we do not, and I'm learning about this issue today.
Likewise, I know that State College does not really have anything in place to encourage businesses to report those wages.
Yeah, I would echo that. That was news to me when Representative Keller made that statement early on in the hearing, that there was an opportunity for that to occur.
Not only an opportunity, that's the way it's supposed to be determined. That's the law. Knowing that you just, you just found out about it today, would any of you be opposed to legislation that forces people who bid on projects to send in the information to the Department of Labor and Industry?
In principle, I'm not in favor of mandates to begin with, so I think that adding additional burden to businesses to file additional paperwork, and I'm speaking personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of the municipality in this respect, but I think that that is another burden that you're adding to small businesses, but...
But the burden would lower the cost of wages. That's, that's what would happen.
And if the, if the prevailing wage rate was less than the rate that the company was bound to under a collective bargaining agreement, how would that work?
They would send in their information for the collective bargaining. The other guys who are bidding would send in their information, and the prevailing wage in that area would come somewhere into the middle.
But if the, if the prevailing wage was less than the collective bargaining rate...
It would, then that would be the, that would be the prevailing wage.
Then they would have to pay that.
Yes, that would be the prevailing wage.
I understand.
It's not, I know, I know, because we've been fighting this for years, the prevailing wage is not, is not the collective bargaining wage of the unions. It's only that way because the unions are the only ones that send in the information.
Well, I think this, just to follow up on Tom's comment earlier, that, you know, provided the prevailing wage act remains as the statute for the Commonwealth, changing the thresholds certainly is a step in the right direction.
I have another question. I don't know which, whoever wants to answer it. We have always said that wages are somewhere around 20% of the project, all right? And, Mr. Conkle, you did say you did $9 million worth of work, and you estimated the added cost was 1.95 million. That's 20%. And this is another thing I've been saying over the years and over the years. You can't get somebody to do it for zero, right? The difference between what you guys are saying prevailing wage should be and what it is now, well, it's not going to be zero. You're not going to get anybody to come in to do the work from zero. So, it's somewhere, the difference would be somewhere between, not zero, nobody's going to do it for 1% and 20%. So, the savings could only be on the wages, because there's no way you can control materials. The only savings you could have is in that range from 1% to 20%, probably 10% to 20%. It's not, it's not that much, and if everybody else would send in their data, that would close that gap. This is just because people aren't, they want it both ways. They want to send in their data, and they want to say, "Well, that, that wage is too high. We could do better." It can't be zero.
I would respectfully disagree that the wage component of the contracted works of this types of work that the, that municipalities are involved in, which mainly have to do with infrastructure, roadways, pipe work, is higher than 20%. From my days as working in the, as in the engineering and construction and public works, we're probably shooting closer to the 50% mark for the wage rate.
We have, we have never seen a study, we have never had anybody testify that wages in a project are 50%. No one has ever said that.
Well, in the contracted part of the, what's contracted out, sir?
Of the project.
Well, there's, there's a lot of costs outside of the contract that we also deal with, and whether those get lumped into the project cost or not is a matter of, there's design costs and things like that.
That has nothing to do with prevailing wage.
Correct. But when you calculate...
We're illegal to talk about the prevailing wage bills, but we can't, you want to talk about engineers and architects, we could get into that, too.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with the labor cost, the professional cost. My other point is, and I think I, I made it, that, who said it? Somebody said that this is a statewide problem for a local, but it's really not, and I know you guys just found out about that. This isn't statewide prevailing wage. It's broken down into areas, and those areas, it's, it is a local issue, and it would be the local prevailing wage if we could get everybody to participate in the program. All right, my final, Mr. Chairman, my final, because I know we're getting out of here. Any of those projects that you, you guys have a list of, do you receive federal money on any of those projects?
The projects that I listed were not Davis Bacon projects. They were subject to Pennsylvania prevailing wage act.
That's my, my point. If you have any federal money involved, it's Davis Bacon. It's not prevailing wage.
No, the projects I listed, I do not believe had any federal money in them.
All right. And when we kicked these bills out of committee, I stated that this is an issue that we hold dear, that keep decent, middle-class wages with health, care, and benefits, and pensions. We believe that's what this does. It continues that to go on. And I stated at that time, again, you can't have it both ways. You can't jam prevailing wage down our throat and then ask us to go vote on a transportation bill. I have a list here for Center County, all the transportation's bills. Now, I don't know how you ask the Democrats to give up something that they hold sacred, like prevailing wage, and then say, "By the way, we're not going to vote for taxes. You vote for the taxes so everybody can get their transportation bills done." I'm telling you, me, I don't know who else on the Democratic side, not going to have it both ways with me. We're going, and I'm the guy who always voted. I'm the tax guy. I vote for every tax that comes down the road. I'll vote for taxes, right? Well, I'm not going to vote for taxes when something that we consider that, something we need, you're going to take it away from us, and then two months later say, "By the way, you know, we, Center County and all, they really need their roads fixed, but we can't vote for it. You vote for it." I'm not doing it. So, somebody better get very clear on what they want, which is more important to them. All these projects were somewhere between 1% and 20% on prevailing wage, because I'm not going to do both. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and obviously, that's not a question you guys have to address. That's more of a political scenario than it is the particular testimony you're offering. I do want to...
Oh, they, but they need the roads.
Right, but that's not their, that's not their negotiation, that whole process.
Well, they're here asking for us to do away with prevailing wage.
Chairman, just to be clear, I don't want to prolong this, but our position was that that we do, we do support prevailing wage laws. We also support modification to the prevailing wage act to reflect inflation over that period of time that has occurred, but we do support prevailing wage. We're not asking you to repeal prevailing wage from State College. I think some of the other municipalities may have a different view of that, but in State College, our position has been that we support the prevailing wage act.
I do want to just quickly note that one of my colleagues from Cumberland County, also a member of our Labor and Industry Committee who couldn't be here today, Representative DeLozier, has a bill, it's House Bill 1191, that actually would restructure the entire process of establishing the data that the Labor and Industry Department uses when it, when it looks at prevailing wage, and it would, it would impose a statewide survey instead of the current system, which is kind of a hodgepodge-type system. So, that's something we could look at in a future hearing. And I want to go ahead and turn it over to Representative Truitt for a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick comments and then a fast question. First is, I think Chairman Keller has a valid point about getting everybody to participate in supplying the data, but that also kind of proves the point that the prevailing wage rates that we're paying on projects are artificially high, because we're not getting good data to calculate those. So, I think that's definitely something the committee should be looking into. And I'd also like to back up your point. I admittedly work on a different kind of engineering project, but in projects that I've worked on over the past 20 years, I always assume that labor is going to be about 50% of the cost of a project. So, that's another thing that is probably worthwhile for the committee to study. My question for you guys, and I thank you for your testimony, is pretty simple. Now, we've talked about the money that you would save if we could reform our prevailing wage laws, and not necessarily by these two bills, but just in general. You believe we could save money if we could reform our prevailing wage laws. What would you do with that money? Would you return it to the taxpayers, spend it on other things, or spend it on more of the same things? In other words, would you do more road construction if you had those savings, or would you spend it on unrelated stuff, or would you return that money to the taxpayers? What do you think would be, for each of the three of you, in your municipality's case?
Well, I, my elected officials would make the final decision, obviously, on how that money would be appropriated, but my recommendation as the professional manager in State College would be to apply those savings into infrastructure improvements and upgrades. As I noted, our, our street condition alone has deteriorated significantly in the last four years due to continuing to fall behind in our ability to adequately maintain the local street network that we're responsible for, not the, not the full transportation network that would be subject to the, to the state bills. And my recommendations would be to apply those, those savings back into those infrastructure upgrades. It may be street repairs, it may be sewer repairs or other kinds of activities, but we would be, I think, putting that money back into those kinds of repairs and upgrades.
I would agree with Tom that that's a decision of our elected officials, but there's a lot of deferred maintenance and a lot of deferred capital projects that get pushed out further and further because of limited resources. So, we would, we would obviously begin to address those deferred capital and maintenance projects that keep getting pushed out to outer years.
Yeah, I'll briefly agree. We're just moving into our capital improvement plan for the township and also into our budget cycle and looking at, at ongoing projects we'd like to accomplish, and we were talking last night at our board meeting about several safety improvements we'd like to make to roads, both township roads and other roads in the area. So, it'd be an opportunity to take some of those savings and apply them towards, towards other aspects of the infrastructure.
So, what I hear from all three of you is you would probably just do more of the same kind of work. I know it's up to your township officials, but that's what you would envision.
There's always a list of things to do. Let me put it that way.
Very good. Thank you.
Representative McGinnis?
This is addressed to each of you, and thanks very much for being here today. Maybe I just didn't see it in your presentations, but each of you addressed the additional cost that prevailing wage imposes on your budgets. And, you know, my belief is the prevailing wage should be, the market wage is what should prevail, and there shouldn't be any government interference in it whatsoever. But I'm just wondering, based on House Bill 796 and 665, if you've come up with an estimate of what percentage of savings those bills would mean for each of your municipalities?
I don't think that I've done that calculation, to be honest with you, Representative. I don't think it'd be fair to even gander an answer to that.
I can tell you that we, we tried to do that in preparation for this hearing, and it's very difficult to, to come up with that determination, because obviously, these projects get bid under prevailing wages, and we don't, you know, we don't get a bid that includes non-pervailing wages and prevailing wages. So, the best that I can do is to use some of the benchmarks that have been developed through studies and evaluations of the impacts of prevailing wage laws, and I did include some of that in the testimony. We expect conservatively at 15% cost increases as a result of prevailing wage, prevailing wage that just, since 2012, we, it has cost an additional roughly $400,000 on projects that, that are subject to prevailing wage under, under those public works contracts in State College.
I'd agree with Tom. I mean, if, if we had to choose one or the other, I think the first thing I'd ask for is, is the return to the maintenance as an exemption, because that's an ongoing project that we do every year. And as I, as I noted, in Patent Township, we're usually in the $100,000, $150,000, or a little bit more than that annually, what we're at, what we're slating for, for road improvements and to keep the quality of the roads up. And with 50 miles of road, you know, we, we don't get around, it's going to be 25 years before we get back around to something we did yesterday, so.
Thanks, gentlemen. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Representative Gergli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. Appreciate your time today and just have a few questions. Maybe we could sort out some of the wage issues, even from your own testimony, if you're willing, just to kind of start. Mr. Conkle? Right? You, on your pa, on page that's written, and so we have it already, but you, you asked, you, being from a school board in the past, I'm real familiar with change orders, and you had a 20, you had a project engineer estimate a project that, under the threshold, so that you wouldn't be subjected to prevailing wage. Then you came back with a change order that would have rose that to over $25,000, or at least a $5,000 increase, which probably wasn't labor, it was related to the need of the work, correct?
No, that's not correct. And I apologize if my, my testimony wasn't, wasn't clear. The base, the base bid went from a little over $20,000, almost $21,000, to almost $32,000. On top of that, then, we had the change order work that needed to be done. So, because the, because the change order was going to move the, the work over the $25,000 threshold, the determination by LNI was that, that the new, the wage rates, prevailing wage rates would have to apply to both the base bid and the, the change order work. But the, just for comparative purposes, and that's why I stated it that way, was the base bid actually increased by 57% by applying the new prevailing wage rates.
So, that was all just in wage?
That's right.
So, it went from $20,000 in wage to $32,000 in wage?
That's correct.
Not the total project?
Right.
What was the total project cost?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, sir.
Well, it had to have been over $25,000 already.
Oh, yes. It was, it was well over $25,000 for the, for the work that had to be done and the wages paid. It was $20,900. The, the wages actually increased the project by $11,900 by applying those wage rates to that base bid.
So, the original work wasn't $25,000, under $25,000?
It was under 25. The whole bid was under 20, was under 25.
The whole bid for labor, material, and wages?
Right.
And it went to $32,000?
Right.
So, how much did labor and the materials cost of the $32,000?
I don't have that answer to that.
You can't assign $32,000 to it, then.
I assigned 32 to the base bid. That was labor, materials, everything was 32.
Right, $32,000 for everything.
That's correct.
But not all wages.
But it wasn't all wages.
So, what was the total percent of the wages of the $32,000?
Well, if you look at the, the cost of the hourly rates there, those were all over 50, 50% increase from the, from non-pervailing wages to prevailing, so, you know, I can't tell you what the difference is there by looking at those numbers, but I can get that information for you.
You understand where I'm coming from?
I do.
Okay. Because you're making an assumption that it was all, there was labor and materials in this, there was labor and materials. We don't know what the material cost was associated with, plus the cost of the business.
But because the project was over $25,000, it certainly increased the prevailing, the wage rate.
I don't doubt that. I don't doubt that, but we don't, we haven't assigned a percentage to that.
No, we have not.
You just said 57%, but we really don't know that.
Right.
Okay, just for everyone to be clear on. Thank you. Patent Township, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Erickson, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. You had a great spreadsheet here on some of your costs, and, you know, we just keep hearing over and over again, and even Representative Truitt referred to... we just keep hearing over and over again, and even Representative Truitt referred to this 50% cost of labor. You had a 2007 pavement overlay not subject to the prevailing rate at $53.33. You had a 2008 pavement overlay subject to prevailing rate at $61.25.
Correct.
The additional cost was 12%. No one in your, not one of you in your testimony, not to be critical, even came near that number, but it's right here in writing. You provided it to me.
Those two numbers are 12%.
Based on that, based on your estimate, I'll go further. You said the additional cost of 15% for prevailing wage. We're going to assume it's 12. Take it down to $33,000. You overestimated the loss to your community of 25% from 40 to 30.
I would say there's probably more going on in the difference between those two numbers than just the prevailing wage. I didn't try to make a claim that there was anything more...
But it's troubling to someone like myself who's trying to protect prevailing wage when you include those numbers and assign it to that. Is that fair?
Well, I made my claim of a 15% based on consultations we've had over the years with local contractors and consultants who've worked in this market, who've worked both with prevailing wage and non-pervailing wage projects.
What does a project engineer tell you to assume for labor rates on a $100,000 project? What would he tell you?
To assume for labor rate if there was a difference, if you were going between...
He will give your elected officials a project cost, and of that will be labor and materials.
Correct.
And what would be the, what's the general cost of labor?
I would say it's probably closer to 50% of the contracted cost.
Nobody brought any projects with them?
No, I didn't.
Okay, that's a good answer. Would that also be assumed under the threshold of 50% from a project engineer?
I'm not sure.
Mr. Kunkel shaking his head. My point is, if it's under the threshold of $25,000, does the project engineer still assume 50% labor cost?
Correct. Well, probably, when you go to prevailing wage, they'll figure it...
What's the difference in prevailing rate if you assume it above or below?
I would say you'd take that 15 to 30% and add it to the project, and that's the effect of the prevailing wage law. Whether that all goes to wages or not, I couldn't tell you.
But if it's under the threshold, why would he assume it's 50%?
I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay. How are your projects led it? Through, like, the Dodge Report, electronic information?
We typically will advertise them and bid them locally.
So we already, you already give an estimated cost, correct?
Correct.
How often do the bids come in under the estimated cost?
Typically, we get bids in under the estimated cost, close to the estimated cost.
By how much percent?
It varies by project.
Would you say significantly or just under?
Not significantly.
Not significantly. How often do you do a project and change orders occur?
Typically, we will see some small change orders on a project in the order of less than 5% of the project.
How much do you budget for change orders in a project now?
Probably 5%.
Because I remember school boards, we used to do 12% at minimum for renovation projects. Am I right?
Depends who did the plans and how much control you have over it.
I've seen some real big change orders come through in my days for some million-dollar projects. But there are associated costs, so you build into that, correct? So you know that cost is also going to be there.
Yeah, you know that there's probably, you should prudently plan for some contingency on most projects.
Okay. So we only had a 12% increase in your labor by your own spreadsheets.
In the cost of the contract.
And you still get a 50% wage even if it's under the threshold. And the best part was, when you did report what the arborist, the additional cost was, if those companies would have turned in that to the Department of Labor, those rate wages, that would have drove your cost down for your prevailing wage in the mid-state portion. That's our point here. It can all, you already proved the point for me. You put it in your testimony that's lower, but they don't report it. We don't need a law. We need people to, and I know you say you're not for smaller government, but we're all for taxpayers, and I know your elected officials are. This is important, that everybody should participate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Representative Galloway.
Morning. How are you guys doing today? Appreciate you coming out. First of all, I do, I want to go back to Chairman Keller's remarks earlier. We cannot talk about these two bills. It's not something the acting Republican chairman can rule on. It's not something within his purview to rule on. So we're not going to, I'm not going to bring up these two bills. I also want to go back to a couple other things. First of all, thank you for coming out here today. Been on this committee now for eight years. I've seen guys like you come up here constantly when, you know, it's a, it's an endless parade of people being used in a kind of a pawn fashion by the ruling majority at this time, when we keep bringing up this topic over and over again. And by your own admission, what I need to go back to, and, you know, I do apologize for, you know, we, although the names and the faces change, the topic stays the same, and the issue stays the same. And what does not change is the fact that prevailing wage is set because the only people participating in prevailing wage data are unions. I mean, we can't get away from that fact. So what I need to go back to is, all three of you stated on the record that you were not aware that contractors could submit wage data to labor industry. Is that correct? Did I hear that correct? All three of you came here today and were not aware of that. So therefore, if you're not aware that the only reason that prevailing wage is set as it is, is because that union contractors are submitting the data and others are not, then the rest of your testimony, all of it, all the data, everything, has no basis in fact whatsoever. And I do appreciate what you guys do in your townships. I really do. But what I want to do is apologize to you for being brought up here. And guys just like you are brought up all the time. And evidently, we're going to go through this time and time again with, you know, over the next three, four hearings, with people that are going to be brought up that don't know. They're not being told. And you don't, you know, from your standpoint, you don't do anything about it. I mean, again, you were asked, what do you do as a municipality to require people to put wage data in? What do you do? You answered, all three of you, I believe you answered, you do nothing. Is that correct? So you don't do anything to require people, and you didn't even know that they could do it to begin with. So while I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the jobs that you do for your township, what I don't appreciate is being brought here on a beautiful summer day to be, to talk about an issue that we've talked about ad nauseam. And to use people like you as pawns is a shame, to be honest with you. So thank you for being here, and I think it's high time we stop beating up on people like you for something like this. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for stepping in to testify this morning, and we greatly appreciate the input you've given us. We're going to go ahead and turn things over now to our next set of witnesses, which is going to be Mr. Siriani and Mr. Amoros, representing organized labor groups. Mr. Siriani, you can feel free to go ahead and proceed, introduce yourself, and testify.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Chairman Keller, Secretary Blum, and all the members of the committee that have made the trip up to State College today. And thanks for the opportunity to testify on this issue. I grew up in State College, so it's nice to come back home here. My father worked for Penn State. He was, he worked for the athletic department, and he supervised the construction of the Blue Course. And I just, I really enjoyed living here, and it's a great community. And I lived in the State College borough, and had friends who were police officers in Ferguson Township, and friends in Bollesburg, all the local community. And thank you for inviting me here. My name is Frank Siriani. I'm the president of the Pennsylvania State Building Trades Council. And our council, for the new members that haven't testified on this issue for the past 14 or 15 times, I'd like to tell them that our organization is made up of 113 local construction unions and 16 regional councils. And that involves all the crafts that do construction, and we have extensive training programs. And we have 16 regional councils, and collectively, we represent over 136,000 construction workers in the state of Pennsylvania, which is a third of the construction workers in the state of Pennsylvania, which is, as you know, a large number. It's 33%. And we have 3,500 contractors that we work with together in labor management cooperation. And they provide benefits through our unions, healthcare, pensions, and family sustaining wages. And I can tell you that we spend over $6 billion a year in healthcare, not including co-pays and deductibles. So, you know, we're part of the economic driver in the communities we have members in. So I do want to state for the record that this is the first illegal thing I've ever done, as my members will tell you. And it's kind of, you know, I had to come home to become a criminal. It's tough, you know, but I'd like to talk about prevailing wage a little bit, and I'll try to make it brief. First of all, I hear a lot of, you know, the market, let the market control the wages. Okay, well, basically, the businesses control the wages, and they have a market that they have to play in. Okay? And we negotiate with those businesses in the communities that you represent. So we have a lot of locals, and some of the guys that are here, guys from the locals here in the community, and they negotiate with contractors in this area. Okay? They're not out of Philly, they're not out of Pittsburgh, you know, they're right here. And they negotiate in the free market here, because if you can't sustain your membership in the free market, in the open market, then you don't work all the time. And these companies want to have, you know, business produced, and they want to be competitive. We do that on several ways. Once, we have great training. We have people that work really hard every day, you know? They work eight hours a day, or 10 or 12 hours a day, depending on the job. And they work as hard as they can to inevitably be laid off at the end of the job, or if they're lucky enough and the contractor has another job, they go to another job. So we work as hard as we can to make our signatory contractors competitive in the open market. So, and we've been doing this for hundreds of years in the state of Pennsylvania. Our locals and the businesses we represent have been around for centuries in the state of Pennsylvania. I mean, it's no mystery. And I was happy to hear that the State College officials are pro-union. That made me feel really good to hear that. I don't hear that everywhere I go. Everybody seems to want to get rid of unions and drive wages to the bottom, and, you know, get the cheapest labor. Well, skilled labor doesn't come cheap, and cheap labor isn't skilled. You know, it's pretty much our rule of thumb. We send people to school for five years. They have to be extensively trained. They know how to read blueprints, they, you know, they can become estimators when they're done. Some of them go on to be business people and own their own companies. And we promote that. We promote people succeeding. And we've always been drawn to legislators that promote people succeeding in their districts. And we try to form those relationships, as we will with each of you, as you go on through your years of your elected terms, you know? And we would like to, you know, develop those relationships further. And I've heard a lot of things here today that we're a little bit out of whack with the reality of what's going on. And one is mandates, okay? People don't want to have mandates that they have to fill out forms when they're using taxpayers' dollars. So what do they want to do? Just spend the dollars and not have any accountability? I think that's wrong. I think that there, you know, I think it's responsibilities. Let's change the word from mandates to responsibilities. I think there's been a real misinterpretation of the English language in the state of Pennsylvania, that we need to talk about responsibilities and responsibilities of government. And that's not, I'm not talking about social welfare or any of the other things that light up all the flames in all our committees. I'm talking about, when you're spending taxpayers' dollars, why shouldn't there be some responsibilities? Like, making sure you filled out the certified payroll on your publicly funded project, to make sure the person's a documented worker, to make sure they don't have a record, you know? It could be a murderer, or a child in the school district. We have to go through all these loops and barrels to have people work on the projects, and just to make sure they're not child molesters. So, you know, at local government, it starts out with a responsibility because you're serving the public. And I think that these guys do that. And they've been told a story over the years, which they keep repeating and keep repeating. The people that are anti-union repeat this story because we do the right thing. We submit our wages annually. Now, that's no secret to any of the contractors. It may be a secret to State College workers, or the board members here, but it's no secret to the contractors. There's been surveys. The Ridge administration did a survey, and they did it illegally, and it was found in court that the way they did it was wrong. There's rules and regulations in the Department of Labor on how these rates are established. Okay? So when I read in the paper, an editorial that no one knows how it happens, that's malarkey. Okay? So it is really out there, and any contractor knows, when they go into a job, and they bid it as over $25,000, they know they have to use prevailing wage already. Now, I think as a government official, a local government official, if you find out later that, okay, it was over $20,000, I took an oath as a local official to uphold the laws of the community, the state, and the Constitution of the United States, I'm going to make sure I follow those laws. So if I see a bid come in, and, oh, wow, you know, we had it estimated at $20,000, and it's $25,000, but the law says we have to use prevailing wage. I think they should have to put that out for bid again, so everybody who's interested in the project that may have bid it the first time would have a fair shot for the local contractors to have an opportunity to bid the project as it was supposed to be written, by the specs. And it's supposed to be in the specs of every job that goes out anyhow, and the local officials know that if it's going to be over $25,000 in any aspect, that they have to include that in the bid specifications. Okay? So that's one opinion I have on mandates. When you're using taxpayers' dollars, you should be responsible. And I don't think that's too much to ask of any of our officials. The other thing, and I spoke of surveys, anyone can turn in those wage rates, as Chairman Keller said, at any time of the year. It's not an anniversary date. Tomorrow, Bill's Plumbing can take one up and say, boom, here's my rates. I'd like them to put in the mix of all the rates for that area, and it gets weighed out. The prevailing rate is the rate that is most commonly used on projects in those areas. Now, everybody thinks, well, that's only local government, that's only schools, that's only, you know, municipality garages and things like that. Well, that's not necessarily true. We do a lot of work in your areas all year long. We provide all the outage, you know, the power plants, all the electricity that's come into this building, and all the gas utilities and all that stuff. That's all done through our unions. So when there's an outage at Three Mile Island, or there's an outage at Burwick, hundreds of thousands of hours are provided by our members to supply you with the utilities that you utilize every day. So we're part, like I said, we're part of the big community, part of the big picture. I want to talk a little bit about the Supreme Court decision that I hear about all the time, and how these local governments have been saddled with this terrible court decision. A court decision is an interpretation of what the law actually is. Now, I believe in the Constitution, and I believe upholding the laws of the state. And that's one of the laws of the state. It was part of the Prevailing Wage Act, and it was actually part of the act. There's a difference between maintenance, reconstruction, repair, and construction. Maintenance, okay? You've seen maintenance, people in schools, in different places. They do some minor painting, they may repair a window, they paint a little bit here, they sweep up the floors. That's maintenance. 18 miles of a road, 10 miles of a road, grinding it down, pulling off the finish, putting in a new curb in another lane, which, that's how far this got out of whack, when we finally ended up in court about all this, because they were abusing the law so drastically, is not maintenance. That's reconstruction. Now, there is an effort by some groups to change the definition of maintenance and reconstruction. And I believe that's what that one bill was that we're not allowed to talk about, 665, to redefine it because of the Supreme Court case that was so terrible, such a terrible thing. Well, let's go back to when that changed. That was changed from the actual way the law was written under the Ridge administration. Okay? They sent a memo over to the Department of Transportation... Okay? They sent a memo over to the Department of Transportation, saying, we're considering this maintenance from now on. That was done through administrative fiat. That wasn't done by you guys. None of you guys up there signed off on that. So, it happened through a slow transition, and it got down to the local governments, and it got down to the boroughs, and all those people. Well, it's wrong. It's the law, and the Supreme Court said, that is the law, and they interpreted it as it was written. And many of you may be lawyers, but I think that's what we go by in this state, Commonwealth, I should say. So, that whole thing about, oh, we've been so burdened since that Supreme Court decision, no, they got away with murder in between. Okay? And they got caught, and now they got to pay. They got to pay what the taxpayer paid for, and they got to pay the taxpayer who's working on the job the wages that they deserve. And I don't think there's anything wrong with the taxpayers that are working on these projects, who happen to be some of my members and some non-union people, get the amount of money that they deserve on these projects. First of all, when you work construction, you don't work all year long, especially on these municipal and highway projects. You're only allowed to work from April till November, so you've got a condensed timeframe to earn any money. So, when your constituents are out there working on those jobs, they're not making a full year's salary unless they go to work at, you know, some other place, part-time, or collect unemployment, which is another thing that they can do. But, you know, you condense the timeframe, and I was in Chambersburg at a Senate hearing, when they said, you know, the average wage here is forty-seven thousand dollars. Well, if you look at the hours you're allowed to work on a highway or paving project, according to Department of Transportation, and then you deduct maybe some weekends, maybe rain days, you don't get paid when it rains in construction, you don't get paid holidays, you don't get paid sick days, and it's not charged to these guys, because there's no one working those days. You know, so, you got to condense that. You know, that comes to, you know, about eighty bucks an hour. And really, there's no one on any of those lists that I know at any of our locals that are making the rates that they were charged by those companies. Now, those companies have all the right in the world to charge whatever they want per hour per the guy they're sending down there, but none of our rates up here are that. You know, twenty-two bucks an hour, twenty-eight bucks an hour? I don't know what the highest one, what's the laborers down here?
It's about sixteen bucks.
Sixteen bucks an hour? What are you going to save? Are you going to cut the guy down to nine bucks an hour? If we go by Chairman Keller's theory, which is an accurate theory, only twenty-two percent of a project is labor, and you could say whatever you want, that's the actuality of it. I work construction. I mean, I know what it is. These guys are not getting a hundred and ten dollars an hour, or whatever the company's charging. They're getting a smaller portion. That's part of business. That's how you operate. That's how they make money. And then they mark it up ten percent. Okay? So, they're marking up materials ten percent, and you're marking up labor ten percent, and you're making twenty percent, and the poor guy going to work half a year is making less than twenty thousand a year. He's making eighteen, ten, twelve thousand dollars a year. So, you know, the whole thing, and the whole attack on workers from this type of legislation to reduce their wages, is not really beneficial to any community. So, you know, there's more to this than meets the eye, and I think that, you know, we really have to look at these things through the real perspective and through real lenses, such as the threshold not being raised from nineteen sixty-one, and the comments that, you know, you could buy, or, you know, the average wage was four, what, sixty-one? Hell, it wasn't even a dollar sixty an hour. When I started working in seventy-one, it was a dollar sixty-five an hour. And you know what, in nineteen seventy-one, you could buy a Volkswagen for nineteen hundred dollars. I mean, we were doing comparisons here. You can buy, you could buy a Vega for nineteen hundred dollars, or a Pinto, thank God they're not on the street anymore. But, you could buy those nineteen hundred dollars, and it was a dollar sixty-five an hour. Well, go buy a Subaru now. They're thirty-five thousand dollars. Our wages haven't gone up with that. There's been a discount. And along with that discount, you need to know about the construction industry. Modernization has made up for inflation. Mechanization has made up for inflation. When I worked in the field back in seventies and eighties and nineties, before I got this job I have now, I'd go to a glass project. Now, you've all been in where the cafeteria is, there's the slope glazing above the place where you eat down there, you know, all that glass on top of there. Okay? Back when that was put in, you had to build scaffolding up there, you had to lump the glass up. I mean, it took twenty guys on that project. Today, with the modernization, it wouldn't even be ten guys. So, the labor cost has actually come down through mechanization and modernization. I mean, go to a golf course, my dad was a superintendent. I actually worked on a golf course for a while. We used to have hand greensmowers. Today, we have riding greensmowers. One guy takes the place of five. It's in the construction industry, too. Panelized walls going up. You put up a whole side of a building in a panel. It used to be thirty guys to build that building, now it's ten. So, the cost savings in labor is very accurate with Mr. Chairman Keller and Mark Gergely, and that Representative Galloway, I know who he is there, have made. Okay? And I thank you for your time, but I think you need to consider the whole outcome, and what you're sending back to the taxpayers in your areas' wages is vital to the construction industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siriani and Mr. Amoros.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the time that you afforded us and were to speak. Good morning to all of you.
Please, for my pleasure.
Oh, sir.
Yes.
Good morning, Chairman Keller. Good morning, Secretary Bloom and members of the Labor and Industry Committee. My name is Abe Amoros. I represent the Labor's International Union. I'm the Pennsylvania Legislative Director, and I also have an affinity to Penn State and State College. My wife and I met here on campus, and we celebrated our nineteenth anniversary on Tuesday, as a matter of fact, and in a bittersweet way, I'm going to be back tomorrow, as we're going to be moving our daughter into East Halls, and she's going to start as a freshman here, so I'm pleased to be here. And to the borough officials, I want to tell you how wonderful you have done in terms of a job downtown. It is not only business-friendly, consumer-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, but it is student-friendly as well, so I commend you for the fine work that you've done as municipal officials. As you know, the Prevailing Wage Act was established in nineteen thirty-one by Senator Jim Davis of Pennsylvania and Congressman Robert Bacon of New York. It was intended to protect workers and their wages from labor that was being brought out of state, in this instance, from the South. It was signed into law on March third, nineteen thirty-one, by Republican President Herbert Hoover. And as you know, in nineteen sixty-one, thanks to a Republican-controlled state legislature in Pennsylvania, we now have the prevailing wage laws that have been in place for more than fifty years. These have been successful in benefiting workers, their families, and communities in which they live. They are good-paying, family-sustaining wages in Pennsylvania that have tremendous benefits throughout the entire Commonwealth. Anti-pervailing wage legislation hurts workers, it hurts communities, and it hurts families. The first argument against prevailing wage law is that it drives up costs of construction. Now, some will falsely claim that eliminating the prevailing wage will reduce the total cost of construction anywhere between ten to thirty percent. So, let's start there as a premise, shall we? Labor costs are typically only nineteen to twenty-four percent of the total cost of a project, depending on the scope. So, looking at the actual numbers can show how preposterous the claims of thirty percent savings really are. Let's take a bit of a million dollars for a new construction project. If we split the difference of the usual labor cost in construction projects and use twenty-two percent, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars would be the labor portion of the project. Obviously, any savings over twenty-two percent would be impossible, unless the workers not only worked for free, but also contributed to the materials of the project. And, you know, I was pleased to hear Vice Chairman Gergely talk about the rising costs of construction materials, because no one is talking about this in an open forum. And the other thing we're not talking about are the costs, the engineering costs that municipalities have to endure. I was talking to a planning official in Washington County in March, who was complaining about the fact that before a project even gets started, they're looking at three inches of paperwork that costs at least one hundred thousand dollars. We need to talk more about that instead of labor costs, because those costs continue to rise in terms of materials, in terms of concrete, in terms of steel, in terms of rebar. That's where the real cost savings can take place, if we really, really look at it and analyze it. So, to look at the issue a little deeper, let's assume that we actually can save ten to thirty percent. The ten percent claim would result in savings of twenty-two thousand dollars, or two-point-two percent of the total job cost, while thirty percent of two hundred and twenty thousand equals sixty-six thousand, or six-point-six percent savings at the high end of the claim. So, can all of this be realized in terms of tax savings? You know, contractors bid on projects based on wages, based on cost of materials, and the estimated number of employees to complete the job on schedule. So, for our purposes, consider the number of contractors consisting of union and non-union bidding on a private job. Union wages are set and are easily attainable, allowing the non-union contractor the advantage of adjusting the wage portion of the bid accordingly, to gain an advantage in the bidding process. Ladies and gentlemen, this does not guarantee that the wage portion of the bid will be passed on to the workers. It could just as easily be kept as profit for the contractor. Without prevailing wage laws, contractors are under no obligation, either legal or moral, to pay their workers a determined wage or benefit. I mean, how much of these tax savings are actually going to be passed along to the taxpayers? I don't have any contractor in Pennsylvania who's going to pass along these tax savings to either a school district, a county, a city, a township, a borough, or any municipality for that matter. And therein lies the fundamentally flawed and rather dishonest approach. Taxpayers won't feel any relief unless they're contractors themselves, and it makes one wonder, and this has been talked about here, and there's a sentiment here, of anti-pervailing wage legislation is actually based upon proven, sound, and logical business practices, or an ideology that is just hostile to labor unions. Now, folks, let's look at the unemployment rate for just a moment, shall we? Seven-point-four percent in Pennsylvania, seven-point-five percent, actually, seven-point-five percent in Pennsylvania, which is a little worse than the national average, was seven-point-four percent. In state college, in this borough, in Center County, it's roughly six-point-seven percent. Now, these numbers are encouraging. However, there are still quite a few construction workers that are unemployed in Pennsylvania. In fact, when you look at the average, you're looking at anywhere between nine and thirteen-point-seven percent unemployment. Changing the prevailing wage will only hurt those workers by further suppressing their wages, taking more from the bottom to pad the top. And Mr. Siriani talked about this himself in his testimony. These are skilled workers who are highly trained, who have the necessary experience to make sure that these projects are done correctly the first time, that they come on time, that they're bid properly, and that they come in sometimes under budget. In your testimony, I cite several studies, which I won't go into, it's about two pages worth of studies, which talk about the economic multiplier, that when you suppress wages, you actually hurt communities, and when you suppress these, the prevailing wage, it also takes away from training as well. Let's create jobs. Let's put all our energy into the passage this fall of a comprehensive transportation bill, that will put tens of thousands of people back to work while fixing our crumbling roads and bridges. And Mr. Kunkel did talk about P3s in his testimony. While you can't have a P3 if you don't have public funding, because a P3 is public-private partnership, and without the public funding in place, there's absolutely no argument whatsoever against the prevailing wage, because there are no projects, none whatsoever. So, let's create opportunities, focus on what's important to the people of Pennsylvania, and we're going to be right there with you. Like I said, we are a business-friendly union. We're not out there to hurt contractors, we're not out there to hurt anyone. We want to build the roads, we want to fix the bridges in Pennsylvania, we want to be part of something that makes America better, that makes the Commonwealth better. And, you know, when we look at fairly compensating our workers, you know, we are only asking for an honest day's wage, for an honest day's pay. Folks, our members are making thirty-five thousand a year on the average. They're not working twelve months out of the year. They're working nine months if they're lucky. And as Frank said, when it rains, they don't work. And when they don't work, they don't get paid. It's that simple. It's that simple. And those other three or four months that they're looking for work, they wind up at a sheets. They wind up pumping gasoline or something else to make ends meet. So, I know this is the first of four hearings, and I'd like to see us set aside political ideology, and really work on common solutions to help those hard-working Pennsylvanians get ahead, because they're middle-class people. They're ham and eggers, just like everybody else. And what we want to do is protect their rights, and make sure that they are getting a family-sustaining, livable wage for themselves and their families. So, thank you, Secretary Bloom. Thank you, Chairman Keller, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Amoros. I want to start with a question for Mr. Siriani. You'd...
We're not taking questions. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, yeah, it's... Anyway, anyway, Mr. Siriani, a question for you. You talked about the Supreme Court interpretation of the existing law, and whether you agree with that or disagree with that, and we might have differing views on that point. Would you not, do you recognize that as the General Assembly, that if we, under the separation of powers, if we are not happy with the way the Supreme Court has chosen to interpret the language we use in passing a law, that if our intent is to ultimately create a different outcome under that law than what the Supreme Court has declared by the way it interprets the existing law, that that's within our normal purview of what we do? We could pass a new law that better expresses our intent?
I understand that a hundred percent, and that's part of your job, and, you know, you look at laws from time to time and try to change them. But, the fact of the matter is, you know, with the local governments, they're coming to you now and complaining, but when the law wasn't being adhered to, which was their responsibility in the first place, they, like I said, they were getting away with circumventing the law. So, you know, where's the justification there? Now, we're going to change it because we can't get away with it anymore? I find that a little bit, you know, the wrong principle.
I guess I would simply respectfully disagree with your characterization of that. We're not trying to go around the law. We're trying to use the proper legal process and legislative process to achieve a result that is more in line with what the sense of our legislative intent is.
So, basically, by changing the terms of maintenance and raising the threshold, and as the State College Borough people were speaking, you know, it's a certain percentage of jobs. Well, raising the threshold to a hundred thousand dollars eliminates, let me see, about three thousand projects a year from prevailing wage. Okay? Three thousand five hundred. And that would be with education, highways, and everything, because there's only about forty, it's about fifty-three percent, sixty percent of the jobs. This is from last year's figures. And when you do that, what are you doing there? Are you looking at lower wages? Is that why you're doing that? Because if you're, you know, the whole process that someone's saying here, we're going to save money, but we're going to save money by cutting wages, and to the people that, you know, really paid the taxes in the first place, and all they're doing is getting their tax money back, or a portion of, a small portion of it back, and you're going to say, hey, we don't want to give you that back anymore, you know, we're going to give you less back, or, you know. There's nothing in these bills that we're not supposed to be talking about that guarantees one dollar savings anywhere. You know, it doesn't say in there that the contractor's price will be fifteen percent less. And as Representative Gergely said, when you put out a project on a Dodge Reports for fifty thousand dollars, it doesn't come in at twenty thousand dollars, it's going to come in at forty-nine, fifty, fifty-five. So, you know, there's nothing in there that says, we're mandated, or we're telling everybody, we're telling the taxpayers we're going to save them twenty-two percent. But, even the Borough Council said, we're not going to save them that, we're just going to do more projects. So, no one's getting a tax rebate from any of this. All we're doing is lowering wages for people somewhere. And I don't think that's the policy that, you know, we would adhere to.
And I think, you know, we, Mr. Siriani, we've had this sort of a conversation before, and I think it's, to me, it's a question of, are the taxpayers getting the most bang for their buck? Are they getting the lowest responsible bid for a job where they can get the most efficient use of their tax dollars?
All the jobs that are done, that are bid in public sector, are to the lowest bidder, the lowest responsible bidder. That doesn't change with the prevailing wage law. So, you know, I mean, if someone wants to cut their profit margin, if someone gets a better deal on materials, if someone wants to, you know, estimate it a little bit sharper, you know, a lot of these companies go in with multiple subcontractors, and then they shop them afterwards and gain more profit on that end of it. So, they'll come in and low-ball it, and then they'll shop the subcontractors out and bang them for ten or for five percent less. And that savings never goes on to the taxpayer, but we're not addressing that. That's a real figure that you can really document.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many times have we done this? This is, I don't know how many times. But I learned something today, which surprised me, that the township and borough managers really didn't understand how the prevailing wage is determined. We've been talking about... We've been talking about that for years, and trying to get everybody to participate, which would, I think, lower the wages and would be the true prevailing wage in the area. We can't help it that the labor unions have a collective bargaining agreement, and they have to put that in to the Department of Labor and Industry. That's their wages, they have to submit it. So we've done a bad job, I don't know how, we said it 10 million times, so apparently we have done a bad job in explaining how the prevailing wage is determined. We'll work on that again and try to get that message through. But if you, one of you or both of you could just tell us the procedure, and it's not a mandate, a procedure for getting the determination to put your data into the Department of Labor and Industry, how onerous is that? What is the procedures to get that done?
It's not that difficult, and the laborers have multiple rates for different job descriptions. And so if you were a non-union company and you had multiple rates, all you have to do is send a letter on your letterhead in. We send our contracts in. Send them into the Department of Labor Wage and Hour Division, and they put it in the mix of the rates for that area. And the one that prevails, that, you know, does the most work in that area, would prevail. After the Ridge administration did their first survey, which was found not legal, and nothing against the Ridge administration, it's just the way it turned out, there was another survey request sent out correctly to the terms of the Prevailing Wage Act. And we were the only ones that responded. And it went to every contractor that has listed with unemployment comp and construction and workers comp and construction, they sent it out to everybody, you know. But really, you know, if you start averaging in wages of somebody, you know, as two people that might have a little station wagon, and they're doing a little concrete work, that's not really a fair thing to throw in with someone who builds a building of this magnitude, because their overhead is so low. So there are a few things that they do look at, maybe the size of the contractor and the size of the projects, that's taken into a little bit of that consideration, but it's not setting a stone on that either. But, you know, they've had their opportunity multiple times. Sorry, Abe.
That's okay. Mr. Chairman, it's quite simple. You send in a one-page form, it could be that simple, to the Department of Labor and Industry, that specifies the rates, specifies the work that's being done. And interestingly enough, I had a conversation with a former member of the Labor and Industry Committee last year, and when I asked him point-blank, "Why aren't contractors submitting this work?" He said, "Look at it this way. Say I have a company, and I have a backhoe operator that I'm paying 12 bucks an hour. I don't want my competitor to pay him 13, 50 an hour to get him off of my payroll. I want to keep him." I'm thinking, "Holy cow, we really need to address this issue." Because if that's really what we're looking at, you're looking at business practices, and in some instances, Mr. Chairman, you're looking at undocumented laborers out there. And I think Representative Galloway would agree that that's a serious problem as well, because some of these contractors are using undocumented workers, they're skirting the law in terms of wages, and I believe you've said this very eloquently, everyone wants everyone to work for 10 bucks an hour without any health benefits, any pension, anything that is pro-worker. And that is frustrating, Mr. Chairman.
If I may say one thing about the thresholds, there's 32 states in the United States that have prevailing wage laws, and 16 of those have thresholds equal to or less than Pennsylvania. And if you go to $100,000 threshold, we would be the fourth-highest threshold in the United States.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, I don't know why you want to go there. I mean, well, at least we'd be in the top 10 on something.
So, really, so we can try to educate everyone. It is very simple to send in your prevailing wage to the Department of Labor and Industry. It's not the survey, surveys are done, we're not doing any more surveys. This is a very simple procedure of just letting the Department of Labor and Industry know, "These are the wages we are paying." And that could go a long way in making this debate go away, because that takes away all the arguments, if we could do that. And we'll be saying it again, and unfortunately, I think we're going to have to maybe do some kind of education campaign of how the prevailing wage is really determined, so people can understand. It's a good thing, it's good for the middle class, it's good for the workers, and it's good for the state to make sure you get high-qualified workers and top-notch jobs when state money is involved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Quinn.
Whoops. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Gosh, for those of you who are regulars here, you know I'm not typically sitting at this table, I'm not a member of the Labor Committee. And I did come in a couple of minutes late, so I'll ask if I do say anything that's illegal, as was mentioned, somebody give me a nudge, okay? That's you.
The whole thing's...
Okay. I'm sure the chairman would not... Chairman nor would the caucus be party to something illegal intentionally. It turns out that there's more than just the three gentlemen who testified earlier who have things to learn about prevailing wage. I wasn't familiar with parts of it. But if you'd just indulge me a minute, I want to tell you my first experience with prevailing wage. In my first term back in 2007, I was able to secure some dollars to help a senior center that had been built in my district in the early '70s, and they had no handicap bathrooms. So I'd been in this room, and I watched a woman, you know, have to leave in quite a hurry, and it became evident that this place needed handicap bathrooms. So I was really happy to work with the senator and to be able to secure some money to do this. Little did I know that once they got the bids, it kicked it over the threshold, and the money that I'd been able to, you know, beg, bar, and steal for was no longer going to work. So, back to the drawing board, I was like, "Wow, got a lot to learn on this one." But we were able to get it done by putting the money towards material, and through the good hearts of some contractors in my district, they actually donated the labor. So it was great. We know we got the bathrooms and some windows, so it was wonderful. But it, you know, it certainly taught me a lot about this, and in doing my research then, I thought, "My gosh, even when the legislature, later back in '61 or '63, set that threshold of $25,000, they knew then, it seems to me, that it was to exempt the smaller projects." Wouldn't you agree that that was the intent at that time? And I'll ask the bearded man. Are we even now?
Well, you know, I wasn't there when they did that, but I do know this. If it's a private firm receiving tax dollars, which can be interpreted in a lot of other things, it could be to a charitable organization or whatever, I don't really feel that there's anything wrong with having some kind of responsibility with that money to pay the prevailing rate in that area, you know, because it goes back into the community, and like I said, it was their tax dollars to begin with. And, you know, I don't know what they were thinking back then, but I do know what the Davis Bacon rate is right now, is $2,000 on all federally funded projects. And, you know, I haven't seen any movement in this venue to go towards the federal standards, but I have in other issues. So, you know, I can't clarify that for you, but I can understand what happened.
And, Mr. Siriani, as you speak, you said earlier that it's only 3,000, what was it, 3,000 projects a year would be affected if the...
I believe that was a figure from last year. I can get you those numbers again, if you would like them.
So between $25,000 and $100,000 statewide, there's only about 3,000 jobs that would fall under that...
Prevailing wage projects, from our understanding from the Department of Labor, is about 6,700 projects a year. And, you know, 53, I believe the last figure I saw was 53% of those projects would fall under $50,000.
Okay. I'm going to bounce around with my questions, if you don't mind. I have a recent college graduate, okay? She's looking for a job. When she looks, it's typically an entry-level salary that would be offered. It's my understanding and listening to Mr. Kunkel's testimony, you know, an arborist gets this rate, a flagger gets this rate, a welder would get another rate, et cetera. Is there, within the prevailing wage, is there discretion for entry level coming into that? Or is it, you get this, you know?
Yes, there is, there is. Let's say your daughter wanted to become a glazer, or a plumber, or whatever. She would enter an apprenticeship program, non-union or union, we both have apprenticeship programs. They typically start out at 50%. And if they're registered with the state, and they're on a prevailing wage project, they're allowed to have apprentices on that project at 50%. Now, they go at different terms, so every so many thousand hours, they go up by percentage. Now, we've had contractors call and say, "Hey, look, I have a project, I don't have any apprentices, I want to sharpen my point, I want to get my number down, can you help me with two apprentices on that project?" So we say yes, and we give them, you know, two apprentices at 50%. Now, I don't know whether or not the companies on the other side deduct that from their bottom line. It's their option at that point, we give them the people. Now, if they want to give that discount to the state or to the public entity, then that's how they do their business, we don't interfere with that. But we try to help them, even in this open market where our rates may be $28, so you're going to get someone for half that rate on that project, and usually a reduced benefit rate, too. So, we do work on that, and it is a possibility on some of these projects.
I've heard a couple of the words that were used, "An attack on prevailing wage." I mean, there's nothing in either of the bills that I thought were on the table or being discussed today that are to repeal prevailing wage. And the words that, you know, the ideology that's hostile to labor unions, I mean, while I certainly don't view myself as being hostile to labor or anything, that wasn't your quote. I do view myself as, you know, I'm going to be a mama bear when it comes to protecting taxpayers. And just with the idea that, you know, well, there's no guaranteed savings to the taxpayers, when I look at something in my house, if I'm going to do maintenance on the outside, or even if I've saved money for new carpeting or flooring, if I get a lower bid, that means I could do more of it. I'm not going to guarantee the savings, but I'm going to know that I could get further in my house on a project. So it just seems absurd to me to say that the cost of labor does not really come into an issue for the taxpayer.
Well, ma'am, I'd like to dissect what you just said in terms of maintenance, simply because when we're looking at this bill, the bill that shall not be named, what the definition wishes to do is change maintenance to mean something else. When Frank was describing how you have to tear up a road, and you have to start from scratch, and you want to call that maintenance work, that seems to be a little disingenuous. That's what I want to express to you in terms of the bill itself. I have no problems with what you've just said in terms of applying that definition to a home project. But as it relates to road construction, I don't wish to use maintenance in the wrong way when it actually is another form of construction where you really have to start from scratch, rather than adding or deleting something.
My example was poor, putting it towards carpeting.
It's all right.
But I would still think that that township or borough would be able to get more, you know, linear feet, miles, or something. And has there ever been an attempt to define maintenance, to sit down with the Boroughs Association, with PSATs, with whatever, and say, "Let's put this out as to what is and isn't when we're looking to, you know, take that out of the prevailing wage or out from under it"?
There is a definition in the Department of Labor and Industry of what maintenance and reconstruction is, and it's, that's what the Supreme Court based their decision on. We were party to that case, the Youngwood Borough case, so... But if I may say something on the term "attack" and all that, you know, I mean, we've been down this road so many times, and it's important that we keep doing it to educate the new members and some people that may have never been on the Labor Committee, and some people that don't deal with construction, because there's information that's being put out there that's not necessarily accurate. And when anyone says anything about lowering a standard in an area, and that's what we fight for, is to have good standards in areas, you know, and I'm not saying you said that, or that you've done that. But anytime that comes up, we look at that as an attack on our members. And maybe it's a little bit deep for us to be doing that, but over the years, you know, it's been a battle. And we're just keep chugging ahead, and, you know, to hear some of the press releases that people have put out, and some of the things that have done in the local governments, where maybe not their whole community feels the same way, or even in a senator or house district, you know, this is a statewide issue, it's not just a local issue. And, you know, we take it very seriously, and if we offended any of the members of the committee, we apologize.
Well, I appreciate that, because sometimes it's the tone that's set that, you know, sets an initial reaction to a conversation. And just understand, you know, what you're looking to do for your members, we're looking to do for the people, the taxpayers in our districts, who, some of which are your members. Thank you.
Representative Galloway.
Mr. Amorus and Mr. Siriani. Good to see you again. Been doing this over and over and over for many years, let's do it again. You brought up one, several interesting points, but one I'd like to go back to. One of the bills we're illegally here to talk about is HB 665, and it's trying, what it's doing is attempting to overturn the Supreme Court, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision on maintenance. And I think it's important to talk about this topic a little bit more, I know you've talked about it already. Can we talk about the attempts to classify things as maintenance and construction, and the effects that it has on more litigation, on more laws and things like that? Can you talk a little bit more about the difference between maintenance and construction as it's currently defined by Pennsylvania state law?
Representative, I think you really have to look at the project specifically, when talking about maintenance versus construction, to see what is required to ensure that you're not starting from scratch. I mean, I can't put it any simpler than that. When you are making a small adjustment to a curb, for instance, I mean, that could be looked upon as maintenance, but when you're replacing the entire curb, when you're starting from scratch, when you're adding 75 feet to it, then that becomes a much bigger project, and you don't want to hide behind the word "maintenance." You want to call it what it is, it's a full-out construction, it's something new, something that has to be added to, something that needs to be replaced. And what we want to do is make sure that those definitions are consistent with the work that is actually being done on the ground by skilled craftsmen to ensure that they're getting paid for what they are actually performing out there. As a former elected and appointed official in a municipality in the city of York, I can tell you that these are tricky issues, and that municipalities look to save taxpayer dollars. But the responsible officials also recognize that this work has to be done by skilled craftsmen who have experience, who have been properly trained, who have a tremendous record in terms of safety as well. You don't want to see any injured workers out there, because it opens them to lawsuits, it opens them to litigation. And to your point, Representative, no elected official wants to defend a law or the violation of a law when it's plain in black and white, and they don't wish to send their solicitors to defend something that they know they're going to lose that'll eventually cost taxpayer dollars. When our solicitors would go out to the courtroom, we would pay them with taxpayer dollars. And so, any violations, willful or unwillful, of something that is currently in statute, it just wastes time, it wastes energy, and it wastes taxpayer dollars. And I don't know of any responsible elected officials out there who want to continue to see that. That's why we defend what is currently in the law, and we don't wish to see it changed, because eventually it hurts workers. But in the end, I don't know of any taxpayer who wants to send their solicitor to the courthouse to beat up on something that's unpopular but is still the law. courthouse to beat up on something that's unpopular but is still the law.
One, one of the guidelines used in the difference, in the definition between maintenance and then there's the line, reconstruction and construction, is the changing of the dimensions of the item that they're working on, whether it's a building, interiors and dimensions, the road dimensions, the, you know, that, that's in, in the law and in the regulations. So, and not having it all right in front of me right now, but I can tell you that would make a big difference and I think that was what was you, part of the determination in the Supreme Court decision.
Thank you.
I haven't reviewed that case for quite a while.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I wanted to note for the record that we have been joined by Representative Fred Keller, also a member of the committee. Next, Representative McGinnis.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Let me ask for a quick response to this because we're falling behind time a little bit. Why was there originally this threshold as part of the legislation in 1963 and why would it be unreasonable to raise that given the impact of inflation?
No, go ahead. Well, I wasn't there. I wasn't born in 1963 yet. I was negative four. My mother was 15. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean any insult to you, sir, whatsoever. I believe that the threshold...
I heard a lot of history from both of you today and now to plead ignorance on the historical angle.
No, no, I'm getting to your point.
Just disingenuous.
No, I'm, I'm getting to your point, Representative. I, well, first of all, I mean, I believe that the threshold was put in place as a safeguard, as a safeguard to workers to ensure that they were being paid a fair, livable, sustainable wage. When you talk about, when you talk about, when you talk about raising the threshold to $190,000, which is commensurate to the CPI, and I get all that, what you're doing is you are eliminating many projects from the prevailing wage. So in essence, you're going to be hurting workers who are working on those projects if the threshold is $190,000. Now, we've seen legislation that would raise a threshold to $100,000. We've seen legislation that would raise a threshold to $185,000. And I even saw a piece of legislation that saw the threshold going up to half a million dollars. And there's even one bill that would eliminate the threshold altogether. That does absolutely nothing to help those workers on those jobs because their wages would be suppressed. And in 1961, it was $2,000. It went up to $25,000 in 1963 because the legislators determined that $2,000 was not enough to provide adequate safeguards for those workers on those projects. So if we were to engage, if we were to, well, Representative, I...
Again, if, if prevailing wage kicks in at $25,000 and that's for the benefit of workers, then kicking it in sooner at, say, $0 would even be more beneficial to workers.
We agree.
So, so the point of the threshold was not to help workers. The point of the threshold was to keep local governments from paying an onerous, artificially high wage. And again, $25,000 was reasonable in 1963, certainly $190,000 is reasonable today. And this bill that we're talking about, quite legally, I might add, because I would not, if this were an illegal activity that we're engaged in today, I wouldn't be here. All right? Anybody who thinks this is an illegal activity ought not to be intentionally complicit in this, in this, in this undertaking. But let me, let me, let me just end with that point Mr. Sirianni wants to address.
I want to address something that you said, Representative, because I, I, I want this to be as informative as possible. The threshold was not put in place for the benefit of local governments. The threshold was put in place for the benefit of workers.
Depending which way you're looking at the threshold.
Sir, I, we, we will have to have that ideological disagreement and I do so most respectfully.
It's a semantic disagreement.
You, you can say that. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Frank?
I have, and Abe and I, you know, we, we walk the same direction in just about everything as far as this law goes and I want to go back to your original question. This law was not put in just to protect workers. This law was actually put into place to protect Pennsylvania businesses. Okay, that's the whole premise for this law. Okay? So there was a level playing field on...
If you could poll them on Pennsylvania businesses, now they'd be in favor of eliminating the threshold?
Well, I don't know. If you want to take a poll, that's fine, but the, the law was developed by the legislature to create continuity in, in the construction industry, which is a volatile market. We have, you know, a lot of things going on in there, it fluctuates and you know how it has affected the whole economy. If you have a stable construction industry, you have a stable economy. And that's just been proved by the housing market collapse. And, 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 you know, it's all very, very symmetrical.
All right. Thanks for your answer. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tritt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of questions, hopefully they'll be relatively short. The first thing was, in a giant coincidence, there's a tree crew hired by my township cutting a tree down on the front of my lawn right now. I just got a text about that. And, and I was looking at some testimony from earlier today and it said that, you know, a flagger went from $32 per hour to $65 per hour. This is on, on a tree crew. And I, I kind of know the answer to this, but I'm giving you an opportunity to explain this to everyone else. At $65 an hour, that's $130,000 a year. I'm wondering, should I really send my kids to college now? Is it realistic for somebody to expect to make $130,000 a year as a flagger on a tree crew? And why not?
First of all, there's no prevailing rate for any one who would be doing the tree work of $60 an hour. That's what the contractor charged. Okay? That would be, I guess, considered laborer's work and that would be $16 an hour that that person made. And that's the laborer's rate in, well, where are you from? You're from...
Chester County.
Chester County. Well, then it might, it might be $22 an hour or $28, $25 an hour. It's, it's a higher economy there and the market provides a little bit higher stability there. But here in, in this Ferguson Township where that tree, the quote was for $60 an hour, that person did not make $60 an hour. That's what the company charged.
So how, what's the link then to protect the worker? If, if the company's charging 65 and they can absorb most of it and profit or whatever...
There could be a possibility that some of the companies that are bidding this work are saying, well, it's a prevailing wage job, we can charge more. I don't know. I don't get in the bidding process.
But if it doesn't translate to how much the worker is actually paid, how does it protect workers? I, I'm, this is an honest question. I want to understand.
I don't, I don't know what that company pays in general. I don't know what the, they may have made the same amount of money. But it levels the playing field for contractors bidding that they're all bidding apples for apples and oranges for oranges as far as labor goes. And, and the big thing with that was, well, let's say we're in Pittsburgh and I can pick, you know, even in Clearfield, a company came in from Ohio and built an ethanol plant. That ethanol plant was bid under the timeframe of Ed Rendell. They got a $50 million grant and Koz status and all these different things that they got, all these tax breaks and tax money in it. Plant's still not in operation today. Not one Pennsylvania, you know, skilled Pennsylvania worker worked on that job. There might have been some residual work that we got.